Calling to order the Monday, June 3rd, 2019, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Cipriani, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henon?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack?
Here. Our first order of business today is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem with support from Councilmember Stedman. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing no changes or additions, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Matt Brunner.
Let us pray. Dear only Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for the wonderful weather you've been giving us. We do pray for those around our nation who have suffered from flooding and different natural disasters such as tornadoes, and we just pray for those affected, and we ask that you watch over them during this difficult time. And, Father, we thank you for this past week celebrating Memorial Day and the sacrifice that many men and women have given for our country, dying to keep the freedom alive that we have in the United States. And so we ask that you bless us and help us to not take those sacrifices for granted and help us to appreciate the armed forces that are serving right now and to appreciate our veterans as well. Father, we also look to the end of the school year coming up this month. I pray for all the kids in school right now as they finish out the last few weeks of school, that they would continue to study hard and be prepared for any tests coming up, and that you would just watch over them and help them to continue learning and be prepared for the end of the year, especially the seniors that are graduating. Watch over them and prepare them for college or whatever they have lined up coming this fall, and I pray that everyone would enjoy their summer. Father, I thank you so much for the City of Berkeley and just the blessings you've given us, and I pray that tonight would be blessed as well, that as we discuss as citizens with the City Council, that we would make good decisions for our city and move our city forward. I pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Next up on our agenda for the evening is citizens' comments. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of City staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. Remember, you may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
I'll hold you to that no comments from council.
We can change them a little bit for this. A little leeway here.
I'm Denise Brainerd. I'm from Berkeley Days, and I am here to present the trophies from our contests during Berkeley Days. First off, I would like to thank all of the volunteers who helped to make this the absolutely most successful Berkeley Days that we've ever had. So we are going to be distributing money to all of the different community service groups that participate and that work with Berkeley Days. We had some new groups participate this year, but usually it's around 20 to 25 different charities in Berkeley receive the proceeds. Those checks will be distributed in September at our September meeting. So we are looking for new members, so if there's any groups that want to get involved, that want to be a part of Berkeley Days, we meet the third Wednesday of the month, starting in September, and we welcome anybody who wants to come. We've got a lot of opportunities, especially with the layout changing up at the community center. We are going to be able to make the carnival bigger. It was bigger this year, and I think that went over really, really well, and we had some super cool rides, and it was a lot of fun. And, you know, we've just, we've got some opportunities. There are some opportunities to change things up. So if there are groups that have ideas, I know we added the Taste of Berkeley, and youth assistance makes a lot of money on that event to help send kids to camp. And we've got the Legion with the Beer Tent, and we've got the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and the Race, and those groups all make thousands of dollars for their different charities because of the ideas and their contributions. So there's a lot of opportunities for community service groups, and we would love to have anybody who's interested. They can, you know, get in touch with me or come to our meetings. That being said, you've been very patient, Mayor. Thank you.
Trying.
So let me talk about something else. No. We had the softball game, and it was a very exciting softball game this year. It was the city employees versus the mom and dads clubs. And you guys, you guys, right out of the gate, you guys, it was a great game. It was very exciting, right up until the end, when the city won and beat Monday.
Thank you.
And then there was the other one. No, the horseshoe tournament. Every year, Berkeley Days, the Berkeley Days Association and City Council, we have had this cutthroat horseshoe tournament. Yeah, we both sides practiced for it all year long. And this year, you guys, you creamed us. It was...
Well, that's not going to carry away. I got physically assaulted by Lisa, but the rest of the team was able to pick us up, and I think it was very, it was very close, very close.
It wasn't, I played, I played Councilmember Gavin, and it wasn't close. It was not even a little bit close.
Blind lock.
It was, you know, ringer after ringer. I had no chance. So anyway, it was a lot of fun, and I'm really glad that we're able to do that, and I hope that we can continue, if not with horseshoes, with some other sort of competition next year.
If we just retired the softball game and ended it with a win, I mean, I'm okay.
No, there's still room on...
On a serious note, Denise, thank you, you and the committee, for everything that you guys do to make this work for the community organizations, but also for the community. It's a lot, a ton of planning and time that we know you put into it, and we sincerely appreciate that. The community thanks you, and having some opportunities for us to have some fun is also just a little icing on the cake. So again, thank you for everything you do, and we can put the trophies right here.
I was going to ask if you wanted them.
Oh, no, we'll put, yeah, we'll put it right up here, and we'll finish the meeting. Yep, that's a good one. Yep, yeah, I think that's okay.
We turn it this way, they can see that it says Council One.
All right, I'll move this back just a little bit, so I'll just put this right here.
I also, if I could just, you know, want to thank, DPW is fantastic. Parks and Rec is amazing with working with us to be able to put this on. The police and you guys, just the city groups that cooperate with us to be able to do this. It's just, it's wonderful, and I'm very, very grateful, so thank you.
Well, thank you for everything, and full disclosure, I did at the end of the last meeting play "We Are the Champions" during my communications, but I will not do that today.
I am sorry that I, you've got it queued up, don't you?
No, no, no. I didn't know you were coming. You surprised me. But thank you for everything, Denise.
Thank you.
Anybody else for citizens' comments? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Okay, we will move on. I'll move on to our regular order of business today. First up is the consent agenda. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 37th Council meeting on Monday, May 20th, 2019. Budget work session on Monday, May 13th, 2019, and budget work session on Tuesday, May 14th, 2019.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of the work sessions in the last council meeting? Seeing none, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda, we will move on to agenda item number two. Would you please read number two, Ms. Cipriani?
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation by Main Street Oakland County to award the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, with a certificate of accreditation as a National Main Street community.
Receive the presentation? Mr. Baumgartner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have with us, as the motion states, representatives from Main Street Oakland County. And here, I believe they've got a nice little placard for us. I would also like to note that we've got several members of the DDA Board of Trustees in attendance this evening on hand to actually physically receive that, so if they all want to come up, then we can proceed.
Why don't we want them all up here?
Well, I guess I know where the plaque's going to go, on the altar up here.
There's still room up here, yeah. I'll let the DDA have that one.
Good evening. My name is John Bryan, the principal planner and program coordinator for Main Street Oakland County. I am joined tonight by Dr. Tim Meyer from the executive office of Brooks Patterson, Donna Van Fossen with the Main Street Oakland County Advisory Board, and Smart, and Annika Norris, who's an associate planner and the liaison for Berkeley through the Main Street Oakland County Program. So tonight, Berkeley has officially been in the Main Street Oakland County Program for the past year. It's been a very busy year for you. The DDA has been very, very active over the last couple of years in Berkeley, and we're excited to see some of the progress and the steps that you're making, and excited to have you into the program. Every year, the select level programs in the county program, there are 13 in all, we do an annual evaluation on each one of the programs, and we use the 10 criteria points provided by the National Main Street Center. For those of you not familiar, there are 25 now communities in Main Street Oakland County. 13 of them are select level, which is our highest level, including Berkeley, and there are 1,800 Main Street programs across the United States, so you're in good company. When we do the evaluation, we look at a variety of topics, and we used this year an outside facilitator, Kathy LaPlante, from the National Main Street Center, was the evaluator for Berkeley. She's been involved in Main Street all across the United States for the past 30 years, so she's very experienced in the field. And we did the evaluation and the accreditation, and we're happy to present to you our second community this year, or of our stops that we're making, the accreditation to Berkeley. So congratulations.
Also, my message is very simple. On behalf of L. Brooks Patterson and the County Commission, we want to congratulate you on allowing us to be able to support your continued development into the future. The Main Street Program is absolutely instrumental for Oakland County to work together, and I need to recognize all those that are involved, from both the county and as well as the cities and villages and townships. So for that, I thank you very much on behalf of, as I said, Brooks Patterson and the Commission. Thank you.
So if we would, we'd like to have everyone go forward, and we'll take a photo opportunity with council. We'd love for you to be in the photo and your trophies.
Yeah.
So if everyone would like to go up front, and I'm going to give this to Dr. Meyer.
Yeah, stand up.
And I will take the photo because I am not photogenic.
Absolutely. We may have to bring it in a little bit. You can block it, you can cover that one. This one we'll keep here. Yeah, you're good. That's good, that's fine.
I got you.
Get everybody in here, close this. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Members of our DDA that are, that were here, if you guys wouldn't mind just coming quickly to the microphone and saying hello to everybody, who you are, your business, and...
My name's Andrew Agby. I own Decipher. It's the old Ron Meyer building for, I think everyone knows that building now. It was under construction forever, but 3010 Coolidge. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Donna Dirxy. I'm not very familiar with microphones.
You're doing great.
I own the neighbor shop on 12 Mile. It was the old Dweenies. Stop by any time.
My name's Chef Patrick Kopoulos. I flip burgers for a living, cheeseburgers. No, I'm a chef owner of Republica, and as well as a food and beverage consultant in this great state and county, so I'm excited about this. It's great times.
I'm Jennifer Finney, and I'm a resident of Berkeley.
So thank you all for being here tonight, representing the DDA to receive the certificate of accreditation. It's something I know you guys are all proud of, and we at the City are also proud of the work that you've done and the recognition that you've received, and I want to thank everybody who came today on behalf of Main Street Oakland County to also be here to congratulate you guys for the wonderful work that you're doing.
Thanks for all your support.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
If I might, we have a training coming up through Main Street Oakland County on June 19th. Some of you have already heard about it. I'd like to leave these here. It's a communications training.
Thank you.
For everybody and anybody.
If you'd like to let us know a little bit about what the training is while you're there.
Yeah, it's a communications training, internal, external. It's set up for basically like the Main Street Program's DDA manager, but also the boards, volunteers, city staff. I know your city manager's going to be joining us, as well as some other staff. We have chambers coming. It's quite a wide variety of people. We have people coming as far as, not that far away, but Bay City and then across over from Grand Haven. So it's a pretty great one-day conference. There's some great professionals leading it, so please join us, and it's free, so...
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any comments or anything before we move on to our next item? No? Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, it's awesome. Ms. Cipriani, we will now move on to item number three. Would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-40-19. Matter of authorizing the purchase of official Woodward Dream Cruise merchandise at wholesale for a cost not to exceed $28,000 and sell it at full retail. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 614-915-818000.
Is there a motion to approve M-4019? So moved.
Wow.
Motion to approve by the entire left side. Councilmember Dean, support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Smear. Just a real brief introduction, because we're joined by the experts here, but as you know, this is an annual item. These are items that we, this authorizes the purchase of those items that we'll be selling at the various locations across the community, and which I'm sure you'll hear more about from our dedicated Dream Cruise volunteers, and our Parks Director, Teresa.
Good evening. It's Dream Cruise time again. It has been for quite a while on our end, but it's actually, with the weather warming up, where we're thinking Dream Cruise, we're thinking merchandise. This is an item that comes to you every year. For the last several years, the amount not to exceed has been $28,000. The last two years, we've spent right around that $25,000 mark, so we don't always go up to what we can. We place an initial order, and myself, our event manager, Dan McMinn, and Mark, our Chair of the Cruise Fest Committee, work together to identify the merchandise and what we're going to purchase, and then from there, we see how sales are going, and we purchase again. Similar to years in the past, we'll start selling a week before the actual event on 12 Mile and Woodward. We'll continue to do that. We'll also have booths on Woodward during Dream Cruise Weekend, and then a booth the night of Cruise Fest under the marquee. Believe it or not, this is the 25th anniversary of Dream Cruise, which means that next year will be the 25th anniversary of Cruise Fest. Merchandise this year, again, Ford is the presenting sponsor for the Woodward Dream Cruise this year, and DT will be the sponsor for our Cruise Fest again for 2019. So we're excited. The committee is hard at work, and hopefully it'll be a great event, and hopefully merchandise flies off the shelves, and we have great weather because that always helps.
Ms. Coon?
What she said. See, I have somebody really good at Parks and Rec, and I don't have to talk like this anymore. It works out really well. No, actually, we've been, you know, I know in years past, I've done these cost analysis to make sure that we get our money back beforehand and all that, and really with Ford as the sponsor, we don't, we don't actually have price sheets yet, but we do know that it's going to be all in about the same ballpark. What we try and do is we try and get, usually if we're hitting it really right by Wednesday or Thursday, we've made what we've invested back, and then the rest of it is just gravy. So we've, we've, there was only one year that we had a problem, and that was a long time ago, and that's when we started pre-sales. We don't foresee anything, anything different. Actually, the merchandise looks really good this year. They came up with some really, really nice stuff, so I think it's going to sell well, and we've always done a really smart job, I think, about picking and choosing what we, what we're getting and really working on making sure that we get the things that have the highest margins on them so that we can, you know, get, get the most profit. I mean, everybody likes to have the polo shirts and stuff, but honestly, the margins are really low on them, and when it comes to the day of the event, everybody wants to have a T-shirt. That's all they care about. So it works out well for us anyways, but we're looking forward to the event, and we're just continually putting our head down and keeping our eye on it, so that's about it.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mark and Teresa.
Just wanted to add two more things I forgot to say. One, for any questions about who we use as our merchandiser, it's a company called EA Graphics. They have a contract through the Woodward Dream Cruise Board, which we then are a part of, and they have a, this is their second three-year contract, so everyone gets official merchandise through them. And then the second part is, this also is a fundraiser for community groups, as you all know, but other people may not know. Our community groups sell the merchandise. Once the city, once the profit is made, the city splits that with those community groups, so it works out as, you know, a great way. And again, we're one of the, we're the only city that really does it this way anymore, so I think it's a really great thing for the city to do, and really great for the community groups as well.
Certainly, those are very important points. Questions? Councilmember Stedman?
I just have a question for you, Mark. How many years has it been now?
I've been on the committee since it started, so it's been 24 years for me.
It'll be 25 next year.
How long have you been actually running it, though? Didn't you...
I think I've been running it about 22 or 23. I don't remember exactly. I think it's 22.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I've been around a while.
Yeah. Thank you so much. You've done so much for this.
Thank you.
Certainly. Other, Councilmember Dean?
You mentioned that the committee does a good job of choosing merchandise. Do you have anything new this? Is it, is it just T-shirts? And I don't mean just T-shirts, but are there other things besides T-shirts that...
Well, there are, there are a lot of things to choose from besides the, we call them trinkets, but like the dash plaques and all that type of stuff. That stuff usually runs about the same because those are the most popular items.
Sure.
They've tried a lot of different things before. Polo shirts are always there. We do have, we get, and I don't know if we have them this year or not, if they're offering them, because we didn't talk about that yet, but, but we had like Hawaiian shirts, are they still doing those? And hoodies are always, if it's cold out, they're always popular. Everybody likes a hoodie. But if it's really hot out, then, you know, that's the chance you take. You know, but usually we see all of the sales of that kind of stuff in volume in the pre-sale, so we load the inventory that way, and then when it, but when it comes to, you know, the two days, the Friday and Saturday, that's when it's T-shirts. Everybody wants T-shirts, so they try things, different things, and we'll try a little bit here and there, and sometimes you're surprised one way or the other. It just depends, but we don't do, we don't take a lot of risk in that.
Well, what you're doing is working for you, and I appreciate all your hard work and the benefit that comes back to the community, so thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
I'd just like to say thanks to Mark and the committee. I've sat on the committee for the last two years to help out, and dedicated committee do an awful lot of work and really makes for a fantastic event, so thanks, Mark, and thank you, committee.
Thank you very much. And, and the best thing about this committee is that, is that Parks and Rec and, and the other city services, DPW and stuff, work right alongside of us, and we've got great relationships with everyone. Everybody works really hard. It's not, it's not a, you know, a one person or a two person. It's like the entire community, all the volunteers and the city employees coming together to pull this off, because quite frankly, if you didn't have it like that, and I've seen years where it was a little bit rough like that, it's very difficult to do, but, but in these times now, it seems like we have that synergy, which is really nice.
Well, and part of that synergy comes from having experienced and good leadership at the top, so let's, let's minimize the role that you, Mark, and Teresa, and Dan, and everybody else that are at the top there to make sure that this all happens, and the processes and things have been in place over 24 years, 22-ish, since you've been leading this to get it to that point today, so we certainly do thank you for everything that you've done and have done for the city, and will continue to do for the city. No pressure, but we got to get to it in the future.
I know, I know what it is.
All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much. Are there other questions from council? All right, moment of truth. Seeing no questions, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M-4019?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-41-19. Matter of authorizing the purchase of a spin place piece of playground equipment at a cost not to exceed $14,032.50 from Great Lakes Recreation Company, 39 Veterans Drive, Suite 310, Holland, Michigan, 49423. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 614-950-970000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve M-4119?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Smear. Under the direction of Parks Director Teresa McCarleton, the Parks Recreation Department continues to make our parks better and better. This, what's come before you today is no exception of that. You'll notice in your packet, there is a memo from Parks Recreation Director, as well as the results of the bid that we went out to, to locate this piece of equipment, and as you see, directors here on hand to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening again. As you can read from the memo, we received three bids when we put this out to bid on mitten, all under budget where we had budgeted, we, this is a budgeted item, and we did go with the second most expensive bid, mostly because it added, had added elements that all of our staff thought would make it better, but still came in about $1,000 under budget. For those of you who may remember JC Bacon Park, if you're, if you're from that area, from 20 or 30 years ago, there used to be a merry-go-round. Those types of merry-grouns are now not deemed safe. So new age merry-grouns is what this is. So I've got photos, if you're not familiar. There's, there's a couple different kinds of this, but this is the one that we're going with. And so it's a safe ADA accessible new age merry-go-round that kids can be on the back of and sit on, and it'll be in a nice, safe area. It'll be a standalone piece of equipment because we do have our capital plan to improve the larger structures at JC Park in the next year, so this will be something that can stay, and will work well with that. One of the things that I've identified wanting to do over the next couple of years is, if we can't always do something big in one year at a park, smaller items like this can greatly improve, you know, the options that kids have and can add to that, and that's something that kids have and can add to that. And that's something that I really want to focus on over the next couple of years. So I appreciate council approving this in the budget for this, this year. It'll take about four to six weeks, once it's approved tonight. If you recall, Great Lakes is the same company that we worked with when we put in the larger structural Angel in 2015. We have a really good working relationship with them. We were really happy with how that went. So I'm confident in how this is going to go as well. And I told them that they can put the order in, hopefully, as soon as I get a good word tonight. And then it should be there for our big event, JC Jamboree, at the end of July.
Questions for our Parks Director? Okay, well, those old merry-go-rounds are dangerous. I lost a tooth on one of those things.
I got a lot of spines from the one at JC.
The old Oxford Park, somehow I ended up under it and things spinning and it just, this, this is safer. Good. Never found that tooth. Disappointing. Thank you, though, Teresa, for bringing this to us. And as you mentioned, you know, I, I don't know that a lot of folks necessarily understand how expensive this play structure, these, this play equipment is. So it's difficult for us to just swap out playground equipment in one park in just one year because it's a very significant cost. So as you mentioned, we have a capital plan in place, but in the interim, if we can make improvements where the budget allows, it's critically important for recreational offerings and for our parks that are certainly very well-used and appreciated in this community. So we thank you for bringing this to us now so that we can hopefully make that improvement at JC Bacon Park. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Cipriani, almost got me. Please call the role.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. Thank you, Teresa. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the next item on our agenda?
Communications.
Who is up first?
Stedman.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Okay, um, the, the committee, the Community Engagement Committee meets this Wednesday and our primary focus will be on the, the city's communication plan and how, how we utilize that within our committee. So it is open to the public. We usually meet upstairs in the Public Safety Conference Room upstairs. So anybody is welcome. It starts at 6:30. Library Board, we just appointed two new members and they're doing great. The Beautification Committee, we haven't met since our last meeting. We meet again this, on June the 12th, but we have two new members there, too. And it's looking very exciting about the, the new ideas that they're bringing to that committee. So our committee chair people, the Mihiaskus, are very excited about that, getting some new energy in the group, and so am I. Other than that, oh, one more thing. My daughter and I did go to the Learn How to Use Your Instant Pot. And it was, it was actually very good. The person that, that presented was, was very good and we got samples of a couple of things that she'd already pre-made. But she gave us a couple of, of several pointers on what we weren't doing and, you know, how we were using it wrong. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. This weekend, we have two major events in the city. The Eighteenth Annual Art Bash is going to be held on Saturday from 10 until 6:00 PM. We will be closing down 12 Mile from Kipling to Buckingham and expecting about 10,000 visitors to come and see the 150 vendors we're going to have downtown. So it's a great time. If you haven't been there, you should come. If you've been there before, you know it's a great time and hopefully we'll, we'll see you there. And the other one is going on at the same time, basically, on Saturday, is Lids for Kids will be held in a public safety parking lot from 10 until 2:00. And that's where bike helmets will be provided free to all the kids that need a helmet. The public safety staff and some volunteers will be there to, to make sure the helmets are fitted properly. And bike safety information will be provided to the kids. And there's usually a, a course that they ride through and show them how to, how to ride and where to stop and that sort of thing. So it's, it's a great event for the kids. And again, that's on Saturday from 10 until 2:00. So hope to see you at both events. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things as well. First, on the DDA front, Downtown Development Authority, thanks to those from the board and business owners that are here tonight. And congratulations again on receiving that National Main Street Community Award. It's, it's fantastic to be recognized for the work that we're doing and to have access to so many additional resources to help make even more progress in our great community here. So that's awesome. Looking out into the future a little bit here, into July 18th, will be not a ladies' night out, but a couples' night out, shopping and dining experience and a Rubina Rhapsody, too, on that same Thursday. And looking a little further out, August 22nd is the Second Rubina Rhapsody, and there will be a day-long district-wide sidewalk sale to create it even more excitement and activity along our downtown. So a couple of things to look forward to in the summer months here, and I'll, I'll keep us posted on those dates again as we get a little closer to those. But just to know that there's some, some neat things on the horizon for us all to enjoy. The Historical Committee met yesterday and they debriefed on the Berkeley Days event and we're again very thankful and appreciative for, for, for their service and for the, the great engagement and support that, that the Historical Committee received as part of that event. And one of the cool things that they found recently is the actual cornerstone of the old Berkeley Elementary School, the Berkeley School over on Coolidge and Catalpa. You know, the cornerstones are those big things that have like, you know, the, the date and all that kind of cool stuff. And it has some significance to it. And, and thanks to the folks there, they were able to, to find and save that thing. So it's going to be an awesome treasure of all the years gone by and all the great things that we have learned and hopefully passed on to others as well. And also thanks to Parks and Rec Director Teresa McCarleton for her support and work with Historical Committee to line up a date for members of that group to go tour the, the ICE Arena. Although that will soon be in our fond memories and history books, hopefully some of the artifacts out of that, that building will be able to be preserved in the museum for, for folks to, to see in the future. And if you want to see what's in the museum these days, you can come on any, almost all Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, except for holidays, and Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the old Historic Fire Hall, just around the corner from, from this room. The Technology Advisory Committee meets on Wednesday, June 26th. And in the meantime, they wanted to pass along some password security tips. So many of you have accounts of various degrees and you probably have a password. And so here are some tips that are hopefully not a surprise. Make your passwords longer in length and use a mix of characters, uppercase, lowercase, numbers and special characters. It's always good to, to do something other than password one, two, three. Those aren't, that's not particularly secure. Don't use the same password across multiple sites. And, and consider using like a password manager application if you have access to one on your operating system. So that way, you don't have to remember them all. The tool will do it for you. Just remember your master password to get to all the rest of them. And that way, you don't need any post-it notes. Sorry, sorry 3M for that. And finally, it was Coretta Scott King who once said, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." And so this past weekend, in between some of the rain, my wife and I had a chance to walk around our neighborhood and in our downtown and, and had a chance to chat with some great folks and, and see a lot of cool things. And the, the interactions that we have as, as humans is, is amazing. And to hear some of the actions that they're doing, the things that they're taking to help advance their, their backyard or their neighborhood or the city is very encouraging. And it's, it's quite a contrast to those who do, whether they do effective password management or not, those who tend to, to work in the social media realm. It tends to be a whole different kind of community. And I haven't been able to piece together how these two things can coexist. So, so my encouragement is for those to, to remember that the greatness of our community will be determined by our actions. And those include the things we do in person and the things that we type in the middle of the night. So let's please keep that in mind as well because that is a reflection of our city. And we want to continue to put forth Berkeley's best reputation rather than inadvertently tarnish it. And let's make real our, our motto of "We Care." And "I Care" to pass it on to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And "I Care" to pass it on to councilmember Dean.
There's a lot happening in Parks and Rec, so I'm just going to tell everybody to get comfy because I have more than a couple of things to tell you. Storytime in the park on June 11th at the Tot Lot, Tot Lot Park from 10 to 11:00 AM. And this is a joint effort between the library and our Parks and Rec Department. Parent Orientation for Summer Camp is June 12th at 7:00 PM in the Community Center. Senior Picnic at JC Park on June 14th from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. Tot Lot Park Summer Fest Event is June 18th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Outdoor Concert in the Park will be at Community Park with the Royal Oak Concert Band on June 19th. And there's a Community Garage Sale, June 21st and 22nd at homes all around Berkeley. And then on a personal note, I just want to congratulate my son, Jordan, and my new daughter, Taylor, on their marriage this past Saturday. It was, in spite of the horrifying weather, it was a great day. Everybody had a blast. And I wish them much joy and happiness as they begin their married life together and stay safe in Italy.
Thank you and congratulations to the
Thank you.
... as well. Councilmember Henan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The ZBA, they don't have any cases to be heard in June. Now, the Tree Board, they haven't met since our last meeting. So nothing to report there either. Their next meeting is Monday, June 10th at 7:00 PM at the library. And then finally, I'll be holding my next talk with Dennis on Tuesday, June 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the library. Stop by any time in that two hours, ask your questions, let me know your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Coolidge Highway Committee will meet this Thursday, the 6th, at 8:00 AM in the Public Safety Conference Room. Planning Commission met on May 27th and gave feedback on a proposed ordinance amendment for childcare facilities in office district and local business district zoning. Their changes will be incorporated and should be brought back before the commission next month. There was also a public hearing held on the repeal of Section 138 dot 132 and recommended repeal of that section, which has to do with the residential grading and the ordinance that was then passed, or was passed by City Council and had a second reading just recently. So the next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 25th at 7:30 in City Hall. Planning Commission did also vote to change their meeting times to 7:00 PM going into the future to kind of keep some relative uniformity with other city meetings. But the next meeting will be the final one at 7:30 as the bylaws must be amended to be able to make that change. So, so June 25th at 7:30. The Environmental Advisory Committee met on May 23rd and reviewed the draft energy plan further, made a recommendation for it to City Council. So hopefully we'll be seeing that in the near future. There was also a discussion about a citywide recycling of household electronic items. Initially, there was some talk about doing a joint recycling effort with City Huntington Woods, but it didn't quite materialize. So the EAC wants to do a City of Berkeley one. And then finally, the Bike Corral for Berkeley Art Bash will be located at the south corner of Gardner and 12 Mile. So ride your bikes up to Art Bash, park them in the corral, and we'll watch them for you while you walk around, check out the great artwork, and then stop into some Berkeley restaurants as well. It'll be staffed from 10 to 4:00. And if anyone would like to actually volunteer to help staff it, you certainly can contact me and I'll forward you along to the right person, rgavin@berkleymis.net. We'll get you signed up. So the next meeting will be June 27th at 6:30 in the Public Safety Conference Room. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by congratulating Lieutenant Jordan Coburnick in our Public Safety Department. He was a recent graduate of Staff and Command School through Northwestern University. I had the high pleasure of being able to attend his graduation and see the admiration that his fellow classmates and, and the people within his field have for him. And it's just yet another reminder of the top-notch individuals we have serving this community. I want to thank those that had, were, attended my chat with Matts at JC Park. We waded through JC Park to get to the pavilion, had a great conversation once we were there, was really appreciative of all that showed up. It was one of our more well-attended events so far in, in this series. So I'm hoping to, to top it for the next time as well, which, so look for that in the fall. You know, on behalf of, I want to thank VFW and the American Legion for hosting such wonderful Memorial Day ceremonies. They were both very, very moving and a great reminder of that freedom truly isn't free. And the last item, I recently celebrated my three-year anniversary serving in this role in what is now my home community. So I want to continue to thank the residents for their embrace, as well as the, the council for the opportunity to continue to work with you with such talented individuals. And then also my staff of, of wonderful and engaged public servants. It's very much a high pleasure and just wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christ?
Your Honor, nothing this evening.
Okay. You mentioned Lieutenant Coburnick, and I also want to thank him for playing on, on the, participating in the team. You, you might wonder why this is such a, a big deal. We haven't won since 2010. It's been a long time. It's been a long nine-year drought that we were finally able to, to end. And that's due to the Public Safety, DPW and then other folks who showed up to help us win. Because it was not because of what council did. I'm able to say that. We started the, the meeting today with the invocation, talking about kids and getting out for the summer and praying for the kids. I would also like to add that we pray for the parents also in the summer, who now have to deal with kids on a more full-time basis. But also, if those parents are looking for a great place for their kids, Summer Camp here is a wonderful, wonderful place for them. And then you don't have to worry. They're in a safe place and they're doing wonderful things with great supervision. So I wanted to mention that. Also, we have, as we heard, big weekend coming up. Okay, Art Bash, Lids for Kids, always a wonderful day in our community. You can just walk right down 12 Mile through the Art Bash, hit Lids for Kids, and then come all the way back through Art Bash on the side that you missed. Hang out there. There's a lot of, a ton of great vendors. And obviously, we know what happens at Lids for Kids, providing the bike helmets for kids who need them to keep our children safe. And finally, you know, we, we've heard today from a couple of volunteers in our community, Denise and Mark, about, you know, sense of community and volunteerism. And those two certainly exhibit that and have for a very, very long time. And I want to thank them again for everything that they do. And the volunteers that are serving with them, because at some point, maybe Mark and Denise will decide they've had enough fun. And we'll have other folks who will volunteer to take up those roles for important events that make our community special. Those are the types of events that make Berkeley, Berkeley. We heard about Summer Fest coming up today and some of those events, all of those things. They, they don't happen without our volunteers and without that sense of care for your community and a desire to be engaged and to be involved and to help make Berkeley the absolute best that it can be. And this council meeting was also not too bad.
Right.
With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem with support from councilmember Dean. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the role?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Terbrack?
Yes. The June 3rd, 2019 meeting of the 37th Council is adjourned.